I'm here at Roxbury for a school director's meeting at 6:32 October 7th. So first order of business is public comment. If some members of the public either use the raise hand function if you understand how it works and if you don't, basically if you hit the participant button, you can raise your hand. If you don't understand how it works, just make yourself visible and raise your hand physically. Okay, so we have two, Meredith Warner and Nissa. So let's start with Meredith, please announce yourself to the camera. So people at home know who you are and also since on the record.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Meredith Warner. I'm a community member and one of the members of the Just Schools Initiative. I'm here speaking on that group's behalf this evening. I first wanted to say thank you to the board for all the work you've been doing, especially to the charge committee for hearing public comment, for all the work you've been putting in, we really appreciate it. We have a little bit of feedback and a couple of questions we'd hope to hear about tonight. We first want to appreciate the commitment to the composition of the committee being 50% plus representation from BIPOC LGBTQIA+ and representatives of disability justice. And we'd just like to offer that we can help to achieve that goal and we could be a resource to you on that. We'd also like to see that same goal applied to the survey of stakeholders and really stress that students, caregivers and community members be included in the survey of stakeholders because their perspective is really essential to creating a full understanding of the impact. We recommend the charge also include the exploration and reporting of data or lack of data on SRO arrests, referrals to community justice center, or other interventions, including complaints against the SRO. The reporting should look broader at broader exclusionary discipline practices and all data should be broken down by race and disability status. And then finally, I just have a couple of questions that drill a little deeper into the creation of the committee itself. So what will the process for selecting the committee members look like? Is there going to be an application process for students and community members? How can interested community members, parents, caregivers, faculty staff and students express interest? And what would outreach to those groups look like? Who will be responsible for choosing the designated representatives from the district, etc.? And beyond the aforementioned targets around representation, what, if any, criteria will be used to select committee members? And again, on behalf of Just Schools Initiative, we're really appreciative of your time and thank you for giving me a space to give comment.
Great, thank you, Mer- Meredith. Nissa?
Yes, thank you Chair Murphy. For the record, my name is Nissa L. James and I'm offering public comment tonight as a Vermont resident and a mother of two students currently attending Main Street Middle School for the board's consideration. I am extremely concerned that the educational opportunity available to each student at Main Street Middle School is not on substantially equal terms when compared to other towns. Specifically, the April to June lack of educational opportunities, the 1:10 PM dismissal time, which limits academic activities from September until now, and the inability for Main Street Middle School students to access remote educational offerings for students attending in person at Main Street Middle School is furthering the inequities that existed previously. This is clearly compounded by the fact that Vermont's number of instruction days comprising the school year already falls behind the majority of other states. In response to the announcement that schools could move to step three, the week of September 22nd, many districts communicated the process of reviewing local data and reviewing teacher feedback in implementing step three plans, of which normal school start and end time can be a component. It is extremely important that this type of information is shared with parents of students at the Montpelier Roxbury Schools. Our family received a letter on 9/22 after that announcement indicating that a move to step three does not change our plan, but parents were not actually listed among those who had developed the plan. The letter did mention that transitioning from step two to three allowed athletic teams to play against other schools. With regard to risks for exposure, I am perplexed why a normal school start and end time would not be implemented if the decision was being made to allow athletic teams to play against other schools. So my request for the board is to add a specific agenda item to these meetings for discussion of the COVID-19 response enacted by the Montpelier Roxbury Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Nissa. I think that concludes public comment, those all the raised hands, last call. Other board members, let me know if you're seeing the screenshot, I'm not. Okay. Thank you much. Now we are on to onto the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Jim, before the consent agenda, because it's kind of like public, public comment, I just wanted to say that I'm going to be resigning from the school board. And my last meeting will be the first meeting in November. So there'll be a vacancy on the board just while people are, we have members of the public here, might be heard more widely. Just wanted to share that news and share it with my fellow board members and I'll be sorry to leave the work, but I feel like I've reached a point where I can't devote the time that I need to, to be a responsible board member. So sorry to interrupt the agenda, but I wanted to say that.
Well, thank you, Bridget. I'm understanding of the news, but also saddened. It's been wonderful serving with you over how many years, four, five? But I cannot express enough what a wonderful colleague you've been on the board and also how much work and great work you've done for the school board. The district, the district is in much better shape since you came on the board and you have been a big part of that. I think you've really done a great job of directing the board and directing the school through some changes, both the Roxbury Village or the Roxbury merger, the change in administration, a lot of other changes along the way. And you have been razor sharp and definitely the hardest working board member that I've experienced since I've been on. So I completely understand I will be very sad to move forward without you, but also you're well due the rest and we thank you profusely for all you've done over the years. The district has benefited greatly and I think we all, the whole community owes you a big gratitude of thanks. So, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's very kind. It has been an incredible team to work with for all these years. And I also just want to say that I'm happy to talk to anyone interested in serving on the board. Really encourage people. It's a great opportunity, feel free to email me and I'm happy to talk to anyone who's interested and has questions. And thanks, everybody.
No, thank you, Bridget. Do you want to make the honorary motion to approve the consent agenda?
And I move that we approve the consent agenda with the additions circulated by Anna.
Do you have a second?
Second, I'll second.
Any discussion? Jill?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Annika?
Aye.
Emma?
Aye.
Bridget?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And Ryan, who I'm not, oh, did I call you Ryan?
Aye again.
Okay, I think I've got everyone. You're all mixed in with the crowd.
Um, Jill, I'm your two, sorry.
Oh Mara, your phone number, sorry. And Mara?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So now it's our board discussion, we just wanted to talk briefly about protocols over board communication. I had Libby send this around just because there's a lot of new board members. We've obviously had some, you know, we've had some issues where there's been a lot of community feedback. Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of go over, you know, the basics of communication. I'll just do it very quickly and then if there's any questions, let me know. I think the, you know, the biggest overview is we want to keep things as much as possible filtered through the particularly requests of the administration, filtered through Libby and directed to the administration. And then obviously, if, you know, if there's not a satisfactory answer that can come from the administration, then the board will take it up. But, you know, I think our biggest job is to listen to what's being said, you know, try to direct the person to the correct person in the administration. And so if someone comes up with an issue about UES, you know, try to direct them to Ryan or MSMS, say, you know, have you talked to Katie? You know, and if they have and they've had an unsatisfactory conversation, then ask them if they've talked to Libby. You know, and if ultimately they've talked to everyone, you know, tell them to come to public comment or to write the board. And, you know, there are some things that we may have been able to put on the agenda, but, you know, try to direct them first to the administration because that's oftentimes easiest place to get an answer and you'll find that some community members will come to you as a board member and you're the first person they've talked to. And they, but they know you, you're their neighbor. You know, your, your job is first to redirect them to, you know, the person administration who can address the problem. If it's another place you can directly, also direct them to me. Again, if they've gone through the, you know, particularly administrative ranks, you know, put it on my radar. I can talk to Libby and see what the story is. You know, she's had a conversation, if they've had a conversation with, you know, since the UES issue, conversation with Ryan, a conversation with Libby. You know, Libby and I meet regularly, we can discuss it. And if it's something that needs to go to the board, I can, I can take it to the board. And obviously, you know, check back with me, see how that conversation went. You know, keep in constant communication. And, you know, if, again, if it's something that the board needs to take up, we can do that. But that's kind of the last channel. Another thing, try not to directly, there's, you're in a tricky position as a board member. You know, if you have a direct issue, go, go to Libby or me. Don't go to the administrator below, you know, under Libby with your board hat on. It can really send confusing signals. You may think you're doing it rather innocently, but if you go to, you know, say Ryan or Katie or Beth and say, boy, it would be really great if UES did this differently or if MSMS did this differently. You know, you're in a weird position of kind of being part of your boss's, of their boss's boss. So they may interpret that as a directive. You know, in years past, there were not clear channels like that. It caused confusion and some, you know, conversations that board members saw were innocent conversations with administrators. Again, it caused some confusion and some, you know, misinterpretation that, that created, I think, some unnecessary, you know, just some unnecessary issues that if you have a clear, clear chain of go to Libby, you know, Libby will, Libby will help direct you. You can also go to me if, if you're, you know, you don't like the response you got from Libby or if you want further help, but don't go to the administrator directly. You obviously can go to any administrator as a parent, but, you know, make clear that you're coming with your parent hat on and, you know, make, make a request that you think is, is a parent request as opposed to a board member request. Social media. In general, if there's an issue that on social media that really requires a response, alert me to it and I will try to respond. You can certainly discuss the response that's needed. The biggest trap with social media is if you're responding, if you're responding as part of a chain conversation and doing it in a board member capacity or something that could be perceived as a board member capacity, a lot of the board members are on these chains. Comments are oftentimes hard to see. Once you get to a certain number, three or more, you are arguably in a position where you've created an unnoticed open meeting. And while the law is a little unclear on that and it hasn't been tested, there definitely is the possibility that board members on a social media chain discussing a school matter could create a unnoticed public meeting. So something to be very careful about. That is also true with email chains. So if, if a discussion is started on our, either our private or our Emma or our Montpelier Roxbury email, particularly about a substantive discussion and, you know, multiple people chime in, that also becomes a where if people get on the chain, there's an open meeting violation that likely occurs. I think that's, that's most of it. You know, if you have any questions about whether a correspondence is appropriate or not, you know, let us know. Obviously, you can also, you can definitely respond to constituents, just in terms of I've, I've got your, your message. I understand, particularly if they're giving, you know, feedback for a board matter, you know, like the recent SRO position. Obviously, that's something that's already before the board, we're taking it up. You know, so you can definitely, you know, respond, let them know you, you've heard them, give them information about what the board might be doing, you know, here's our agenda, et cetera. So that is all perfectly fine. So any, any questions about that? And I know it can take a little while to kind of figure out the nuances of it. But I think the, yeah, I think the biggest thing to, to remember are, the biggest things to remember are, you know, direct people as much as possible to the proper administrator. If you get specifically a specific question, be very careful about starting any sort of chain on either social media or email that could violate the open meeting law. And, you know, be very careful about your, your correspondence with administrators other than Libby to make sure that you're not giving the appearance of giving them some sort of directive. So questions from the board?
Jim, I have a quick question. Um, so if we get, if we get emails, at what point does it make sense to maybe direct to you to be a point person or a voice for the board? And when does it make sense for us to just reply? Like, let's say someone emails the whole board at once, who replies?
Generally, I will reply and then that's been the, that's been the protocol in the past. I would do like one of two things if you want a specific reply. One, you can definitely acknowledge that you got it and say thank you for the input. If you want to make sure that a certain substantive thing gets communicated, I would communicate with me first because, you know, technically we, we are supposed to be a body that speaks as one. So I would do that. You know, you can definitely acknowledge, you know, thank you for your note. You know, we heard you and, you know, and, you know, it's on the next agenda. You could, you know, that type of communication is fine. If it's something substantive, you know, talk to me before I respond and we can discuss it. Because what we want to avoid is a situation where the board appears to be speaking with, with two voices. Emma?
I just want to clarify the document that was included in our board packet.
Yep.
It says that it's a protocol document, but I can't find the protocol or the procedure in, in our policy documents that are public on our website. So I find the expectations for Montpelier Roxbury board members, but no procedure there. So I'm wondering if this is just sort of like a summary that, that Libby maybe you put together or if it's an actual adopted procedure of how to interpret the policy.
It's not an adopted procedure, I could let Libby speak more on it. I think it comes largely from materials and trainings we've had with the VSB over the years on, over the, on this subject.
Yeah, we had a board member ask as well, how do I respond to this, 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 this new board member? So Jim asked me to put together a protocol for it. So it would fall under one of those policies, but it wouldn't be up as a procedure. Procedures aren't adopted, the policies are.
Okay.
Long though, Jim, we do have a policy about communicating with superintendent that I believe some of this, not all of this by any means, that some of this touches upon.
Yeah, this falls under the board expectation policy as well as the board superintendent relationship policy. Both of those policy it touches on.
The social, the social media, and I actually think it would be helpful for us to have a training with Susan from VSB because she's, she's really well versed in the open meeting law, which ultimately, I, not all of this, but half of this, and I talked with Jim about this beforehand, half of this is really aimed at ensuring that, you know, we have open meetings and whenever a quorum of us is meeting, whether as a subcommittee or as a committee, we're doing it in a transparent way and in an accessible way to the public. Because it can be a slippery slope, you might just be talking about something very, you know, trivial with some other board members, but still, we, we have to watch it because of our role. Jim, I also think it might be worth touching on the power of the board as a collective versus the power that individuals have, as well as, you know, none of this precludes an individual's First Amendment rights. I mean, and we're not always going to agree on absolutely everything. Sometimes, you know, the board will make a decision and I think as a board member, it's, it's best to say, you know, the board has made a decision on this. You know, we're, we're moving in that direction as a board. I, Andrew, I don't agree with this. My general perspective on this is A, but the board decided B and, you know, I'm going to respect that. And the board ultimately as a collective has the authority and we're moving forward in that direction. So that's the situation, but I understand where you're coming from and, you know, I do in favor of this.
Yeah, no, you can definitely explain your personal positions. Yeah, but at, at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's, it's supposed to be one board that speaks with, with one voice. So if you're, if you're articulating, you know, a different position, I think you have to be very clear that you're doing that as an individual and not on behalf of the board.
It might not hurt, since we're talking about all this communication process again, to maybe reconfirm the norm that the board is operated with regarding the superintendent's executive assistant. We've historically interacted with what is Anna's position now a little bit differently. We might ask for a warning or we might ask for a specific document or something kind of directly from the superintendent's assistant. It seems like the relationship there is a little bit different than a normal administrator. And as I understand, I think everybody has been comfortable with that so far, but I just want to get that out there again too, as we're discussing all of these relationships and how we're working together.
Yeah, thanks for saying that, Ryan. I, I do, Anna does play a different role for the board in terms of warnings and things like that. So I, I think it's appropriate for you not to use me as a mediator when you're asking for a warning for a policy committee, for instance. But feel free to CC me on that as well. Because Anna does, Anna actually knows more about that than I do. So, so she would be the appropriate person to talk to for warnings and things like that.
Yep.
There's another example that came up recently in our policy committee that made me think about, you know, when I read the actual policy, it didn't seem like anything that we were planning to do would be in breach of that policy. But then when I read the board protocol document that is included in the board packet today, it seems to signal, signal otherwise. So there was a moment, Ryan, maybe you can remember this, or Mara, you were there and I think Bridget was there too. But where we were looking for more information about whether Power School or something would allow us to do what we wanted to do under the new gender policy. And one of us said, oh, I'll, I'll give Ryan a call or I'll give, you know, one of the principals a call. And so, but that communication should go through Libby. Libby, we want to know if Power School does this. You cannot go directly to, that would be a breach of the policy. You wouldn't be able to email like a clarifying question.
Well, I mean, some clarifying questions are, they seem easy, but sometimes it's, you know, like, boy, could you give me the budget numbers from the last 15 years on, on X? And that goes to Grant, you know, in the middle of budget season when he's working, you know, 60 hours. And he doesn't know like, well, do I need to drop all this and, and, you know, find this information for, you know, Andrew or Jill? You know, it's hard to, you know, tell a, a board member, you know, too busy. So, you know, that's why it's good to have Libby be the gatekeeper of what could even seem like a simple clarifying request.
One other thing, Jim, I was just referencing the expectations for the, for the board members. And in there, it does mention the chair can speak for the board, but it also clarifies that the chair cannot act independently or direct any actions by themselves, which gets back to the collective power of the board. Not any, no board member has any special power to act on behalf of the board without, you know, the will of the board, but the chair is the de facto spokesperson of the board, if you will, speaking on behalf of the board.
Yep. Other questions or comments? Yeah, feel free to, you know, ask, ask me or Libby as it, it comes up. It, it, you know, it, it takes some, it takes some time, so.
And Jim, maybe you and I can talk about whether it's worthwhile to have Susan Holson come back from the VSB because I look around and without Bridget and a new member and Bridget's, Bridget's square here on my Zoom screen will have an overwhelmingly new board. I think Andrew, Bridget, I didn't think you were there, Jim. I think Andrew, Bridget and Ryan might be the only board members who participated in that training. Ryan, were you in that?
Yes, we were all there.
So it might be a good idea, that was a good training.
Yeah, no, I think that's definitely, I think regular comms training is, is very helpful. Yeah, and things evolve too, especially with, with social media. And, and now with, with Zoom. Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, we're, we're interacting with the public in, in ways we haven't in the past. And, you know, the laws aren't necessarily catching up. So it's, it's always good to make sure we're, we're in compliance and be effective. It's, it's always good to make sure we're, we're in compliance and be effective, um. Okay, so, uh, so we can move on, uh. Emma or Mara, do you wanna talk about the, the committee charge, or you want me to delete that discussion? I'm happy, happy either way.
You can go ahead.
Yeah. Great, so, uh. Believe, last week, um, days are blurry. Uh, the three members appointed at the last meeting to put together a charge and some guidance on the. Discussion around uh, school safety and police relations, which also encompasses the S R O position. Uh, met to put together uh, a proposed charge and also some recommendations around both timing and. Composition uh, of the committee. Uh, the proposed charge is in the packet, it, it roughly follows, uh. The, the resolution that was passed, um. Uh, basically, you know, highlighting and. Putting together a committee to look at the aims and expectations for school safety. Uh, evaluating uh, the district's primary safety concerns, the historic roles and duties of the S R O. Uh, successes of the S R O, uh, challenges and concerns that have arisen around the S R O. Uh, and how the S R O position and district safety uh, are being and have been uh, evaluated and accounted for. Uh, also defining the aims and expectations of justice in our schools, uh, more generally. Uh, especially evaluating the impact of current and historic systems on all of our students and in particular. Uh, BI, BIPOC, uh, L B G T I Q A, uh, disabled and other students uh, that have. That are members of historically marginalized groups. Uh, defining the aims and expectations and the role and conduct of the police in our schools. Uh, given justice, safety and D E I concerns, um, as well as, you know, the values that this school. Uh. Uh, uh, wants to, to move forward with, um, and, and also, uh. To conduct a survey of stakeholders, uh. Uh, as well as, uh, you know, taking interviews and testimonies of, uh, you know, key members. Uh, who have uh, a role in decisions around safety, uh, including. Uh, the district administrators, uh, city officials, uh, police officers. Uh, teachers, uh, guidance counselors and obviously, uh, you know, parents, uh, and members of the community at large. Uh, the proposed committee composition, uh, uh, was, uh, three board members. Uh. Uh, as well as two students, and we also felt that in students we could include some recent graduates. Uh, who are, are freshly out of the district, especially. Uh, with uh, more than usual, uh, perhaps being still local, given. Covid or look, or able to participate virtually from, uh, you know, from afar. Uh, especially since we've had some, some students in the past who have had. Uh, both experience with the S R O and deep involvement in the evolution of the, the district's, um. Commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, two faculty or staff, um, ideally, uh, guidance counselors or social workers, but. Um, recognizing, uh, that, that some of, of them might be in a position where they're, they're reluctant to speak out. Given the relationships they have with, with students and with the S R O over the years. Uh, two administrators, our feeling was that Libby should not be a, a member of the committee just because she. Uh, has uh, a vested role in carrying out, uh, the, the safety charge. Uh, but obviously Libby would, uh, would come to the committee and, and give testimony and, um. Give her perspective, uh, three community members. Um, three board members who would likely be the three board members, uh, already assigned to this, um. Uh, one member of the city council, uh, and one member of the police department who we felt should not be either the S R O. Or the police chief, but obviously we would wanna hear from the chief and, um. Potentially the current S R O or former S R O, um. Efforts, uh, would be made to, um, to make the committee as diverse as possible and to get as many voices of. Of, uh, historically marginalized groups. Um, and efforts would also be made to represent, uh, both the communities in our district as well as R L for schools. Um. The board can discuss a way to, uh, recruit, um. Uh, members to the committee, assuming that they accept the proposed composition, but. Um, you know, one way we've done in the past is to. Uh, open it up to the public and have, uh, interested members write letters, short letters of interest, uh, to either the board chair or the board as a whole. Um, and then come back and, and pick from those interested members, um. Uh, and for the proposed committee timeline, we kind of thought about having a staggered timeline, given that we feel there's, there's a couple. Decisions to be made, uh, given the budget timeline. There's an immediate decision or a relatively immediate decision about what to do with the S R O position from a budgetary and other perspective. Uh, that we need to make in time for, uh, you know, passing the budget, so we would need a recommendation. By December, so that way, uh, Libby and Grant can, can accommodate that in the budget that they put forward and that we approve in January. Uh, but we also felt that that was just a piece of the conversation and a, a piece of what this committee should be charged to do. Uh, so, uh, and also the doing, doing all the work of putting together a really broader report. That looks more holistically at safety, um, in our schools and in our district, uh, you know, through a diversity. Equity and inclusion lens, uh, was not something we could, could do, uh, justice to. Uh, by December, so we set a timeline of a broader report and recommendations for that by March, so. Um. Mara and Emma in particular, anything I missed that you'd wanna add?
Um, I just wanna emphasize the, um, the real, the, the real intention and also the fact that intention is not enough. To make the committee be fifty percent plus one or, um, majority. Um, black indigenous people of color, L G B T, um, when disability representation. Um, just because it is really easy for organizations to say. Um, we want to emphasize this and we're gonna try really hard, um, and it is another thing to do the thing. Um, and so I just wanna recognize that it's easy to, to make a commitment and not try. And I think it's really important that, um, you know, as a community, we work really hard. To do what we can to, to abide by the, uh, commitment that we made to do our very best. To get, um, that kind of fifty percent plus one, just because inherently in a district. Um, where, well, inherently in Vermont, where a bazillionth percent white and inherently we are. Um, there, the disabilities, um, the, the community of folks who represent disabilities rights and L G B T rights. Are numerically smaller, right? They just are. There's no getting around that they are numerically smaller. So inherently, when we go to fill this committee, it is going to be really easy to fill it with a bunch of white, straight. Temporarily able-bodied people, because there are just numerically more of those folks and a lot of them who are already in. Positions that we want on this committee, places with voices that we need to hear. So I just really wanna emphasize that cuz I know it's not gonna be easy to do. And I wanted to say out loud that it's important, even if it isn't easy.
Yeah. Yep, I agree. Um. Any other general comments and then we can, uh. Uh. Discuss the, the, the charge and then the composition, um, and then I think, uh. We need action approving the charge and the composition and the, the timeline, and then we can, uh. Start soliciting members.
Jim, I have, I have some questions, but I don't know if now is the right time or if Emma has something that she wants to add, um. I don't know how you wanna do this.
Yep, um. And if you, if you have anything to add, go ahead, and then also, um, I'm wondering in terms of procedure. Uh, should we have someone move and then discuss and amend the charge? Or should we just have a general discussion first? We probably should have someone move to approve the charge and composition. And then we can discuss any amendments and then vote on. An amended charge if we have an amended charge. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I am particularly interested in what other board members think of the composition in particular because a lot of. Um, discussion went into. How do we make this balanced? How do we make the composition, um, balanced and, you know, the, depending on the way that you look at it. Um, if you consider people to have a bias walking in, if you're a school official, do you have a bias walking in? Um, if you're a city official, do you have a bias walking in, you know, and I'm sure everybody has their own biases, but a lot of discussion, um, went into that, and so. I'm eager to hear the thoughts of other board members on that. Um, so I don't know if that discussion, like Andrew said, should it happen now or should it happen after a motion is made?
I think probably we should have a motion and then have a discussion. I don't know, Ryan, I know you're a parliamentarian, which I know me.
I was just gonna say, I'll go ahead, I'll make a motion that we approve the charge that was presented to us in the board packet.
Yes. Great, um, discussion. Andrew, now, now it's.
Alright, okay, so I, I have a, I have a number of, of questions and comments, um. First of all, um, this is very minor, but if we are approving the charge, D E I, I assume means diversity, equity and inclusion. And I think it would be good to spell that out in the charge.
It's called out in some places and not in others, so apologize for that, but, um.
It's alright, um. I, you know, we've received some public comments on this and I. I had the same exact comment when I went through this with regard to the survey of stakeholders, um, which is. I wasn't clear, so this is a general question, I wasn't clear why, you know, students, community members, families. Weren't included in that list of stakeholders for perspectives on the S R O, because I think those are important perspectives and. Um, so I don't know what the general thinking is there. So I wanted to ask that.
I think we can definitely add them, I think the list was not, um. It is not an exclusive list. I think these were. I think part of the idea. And, and it certainly may expand it is that. Um. That the committee itself would have representatives of those stakeholder groups in the public. And that the people we listed are the people who are involved in. The administration of safety in our schools, but will not be directly involved in. The committee other than, um. There will be representatives, but there's gonna be some key people that we did not want directly involved in the committee, um. Like Libby, like the chief, um, you know, like Bill Fraser, people who are at high level and. You know, decision makers, but people who we feel need to inform the committee about. Um, you know, what the day-to-day challenges are about their jobs and how, you know, various positions relate to those challenges. Um, but obviously, uh, I, I think it would be easy to. Uh, include those other groups as well cuz we certainly did not need to exclude them.
I think we should, um, include it in the language there if, um.
Yeah.
And then, and maybe we can say, but not limited to.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Al- also, under the aims and expectations, I realize I jumped over one of my other comments. We have, um, the well-being of all the district's students and staff. I'm wondering, and this is, this is a general question, you know, it, it's, it is students and staff, but it's not just students and staff, I believe. We are talking about families that the police sometimes. Um, works with as well through our schools, I believe, um. And when we're talking about, um, the aims and expectations. Um, of school safety and justice, I, I do wonder if it should be something like students, staff and families. But I, I don't know, maybe that's expanding this too much, I. I am, you know, I understand scope creep, but it's just something that I thought about there. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts about that.
So I think that made sense, but say that again cuz in part I was, um.
Under, under the aims and expectations, it says in the well-being of all the district's students and staff, I wonder if we should expand that to students, staff and families.
Sure, why not?
And then, um. My several higher, higher level, um, questions slash comments, one is. So to turn this around by December twenty twenty, by December, you know, we're talking about like two months from now, that's a really tight timeline and we. The committee isn't even formed yet, which can also take some time, having been there, um, what kind of. What, how long do you think it will take to organize the committee and what kind of meeting schedule are you guys thinking about working on? Pretty vigorous.
It's gonna have to be, I mean, that's why we wanted to limit it to the S R O decision by December, um. Uh, so I, my. My feeling is that we take between now and the next meeting to, uh, solicit, uh. Uh, applicants that, that we open up the period till the next meeting and then at the next meeting, we go over our list of, of applicants. And, um, you know, the board being guided by the desire to have this be as diverse a committee as possible. Um, and as representative a committee as possible, uh, you know, choose from the applicants we have. Uh, and then we set a schedule where hopefully we can have, you know, perhaps a meeting in late October. Uh, maybe a meeting in November where the focus is very much on the S R O position and. Um, you know, what that entails and, um, you know, how another alternative might. Might line up for next year and. You know, and then have a recommendation come to the board by. You know, sometime, probably that first or second meeting in December, but you're right, I mean, not only is it a tight timeframe, there's the holidays, et cetera. But I think we can get guidance on the S R O by. By December, but it will, you know, it'll probably entail a couple of meetings, one late October, maybe two and, you know, maybe. Early November, mid-November, late October, mid-November, whatever.
Should we say the end of December? I'm just, I just don't wanna set this committee up to miss an important deadline. But I also understand time is of the essence, so.
So what is it, Sarah, and now, it just says.
On December.
I mean, that can be the end of December, um. You know, people are, yeah, once you have the twentieth December, it's, well, I guess, you know, people aren't going anywhere this year, but, um, they might be. Um, flipping their laptops down and tuning out for a week or two.
Okay.
I agree with Andrew though, like a lot of people might read that just semantically as by December.
Right, right, that's, that was my concern, that's, I read it, I'm like, wow, you're, by the end of November, we're gonna have this on our. Plates.
And what would happen if?
End of December, if that makes it clear.
What would happen if the committee, um, realized by the end of this December that they weren't gonna be able to make a. Recommendation, could they extend the deadline or is the charge the charge? Could it be?
I, I think the problem is we've got other deadlines with the, you know, the budget, like. I think the latest. When's the latest we can make a budget change, Libby? It's, it's that, like, it's early January, early to mid-January, right?
Keep talking, I'll get back to you, I'll, I'll just have to pull up the timeline.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so to, my, my last, my last two thoughts on this, but I, I really appreciate all the work you've done, and I think that this is an important issue, which is why. I thought so much about this and I read it several times, um, do you think that, that this committee might benefit from a committee? Do you think that, that this committee might benefit from a committee chair to kind of organize things? There's no committee chair here.
Well, we do need the facilitation option, which is something else we need to discuss.
Right, that, yeah, that's right. Yeah, so the process is a, okay, so I'll, I'll table that. Or do you want to talk about that now?
You know, I think it's worthwhile, because as we were having this conversation, talking about the representation of the groups and the membership, as it's listed here, we have a fourteen-person committee doing a lot of work in a short amount of time. It is going to be tricky to get that group together, their schedules to align, to make this happen. So I think it is worthwhile pointing that out, that if there is a chance to facilitate or to have it a little more structured, it would be worthwhile, because we are talking about a big committee for a lot of different populations trying to make this happen.
Yeah, and that's the next thing I think we need to discuss is facilitation. So we have, we actually have till January twentieth on the budget. So we could, I, I think we should put in the charge end of December, and if we feel we need a week or two, it's better to have that in our back pocket and extend it, and the board could extend it rather than giving us till the deadline, because people always take till the deadline. It's just human nature, so. In light of that, though, in light of the timeline, and I know we're, we're jumping a little, but ha- having a facilitator and, you know, we can pay for it. I know the city has offered to pay for a part of it. If there's discomfort with that, we can pay for the whole thing. I'm not sure this, you know, given the scheduling challenges of a fourteen-member board, given the need to, you know, think between meetings, you know, synthesize notes, et cetera, make sure the next meeting is a smooth transition from the meeting that just happened, that's going to be a tough charge without someone passed to it.
Does the language for facilitator need to be in the charge? Is that what we're saying?
I think we could just do a separate motion authorizing, authorizing the district to hire, I'm assuming, it would be Susan and, and Kasia.
And I also, on, on that issue, I, I do think we should be the one paying for it. We've had some emails and some different concerns that have been raised about conflicts of interest and the city has a financial stake in this. And ultimately, we aren't, this is a community issue without a doubt. And, you know, taxpayer dollars go, go to the, pay the police department. The city council makes decisions about taxpayer dollars, as do we ultimately taxpayers. Ultimately, Montpelier residents make decisions about how those resources are used after the city council and after the school board put those budgets, which are reflections of our values to the community. But that being said, this really is about school safety and it really is about police involvement in our schools and it's about school justice. And for the price tag, I, as I understand it, I, I just think to avoid any of those situations, it's not meant to disrespect the city in any way whatsoever. We need to, we need to collaborate with the city on this as we do with the community. But I personally think having that level of independence would be helpful.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, I really appreciate the city's offer and, and it was, it was generous of them. But I think for, you know, to ensure that, that this is, you know, fully a district venture, we should, we should be the ones paying for the facilitator.
Related to that, the issue also came up in emails to board members about the potential of having the city council member and the Montpelier Police Department member be non-voting members of the committee to protect from any conflict of interest. What do people think about that?
So I, that was, that was the last thing I wanted to ask, ask about, actually, and then I'll shut up. But this committee, as I understand it, as I read this charge, does not have any power to make any decisions about this. This committee is making a recommendation to the board, which has the discretion. And the board, it, we're the elected representatives for the community, you know, empowered to make these decisions. So I definitely appreciated those concerns and, and I do appreciate those concerns. But, and, and I, I do think that there are going to be a number of interested parties on this committee that, you know, working for the auditor's office, for example, if, if you have a bias in one direction or another, you have to report those types of things. This is not an audit, right? This is, this is a community committee that is meant to represent a range of interests, to address some major community issues that, that we want to, that we want to move forward with. So to that extent, to the fact that this committee doesn't actually have any decision-making power, I'm not certain how much of a risk there is. But that's just my, that's just my two cents. I'm curious, dear, what other board members have to say.
I'm not, I'm not sure this is even a committee that, that might vote. I think the recommendation might be a, you know, the majority of the committee felt this way, expressed, you know, concerns the other way were expressed by committee member X who stated this. You know, here's what the, here, here's what we learned from the testimony. So I, I think the report's going to be kind of more in a narrative form than a, you know, by, you know, twelve to two, we decided to do X. And then there could be like a consensus recommendation with, you know, here are some dissenting opinions. So I'm, I'm not sure we even really empower the committee to vote. They just, you know, have to put together, you know, a report that, that reflects, you know, the views of, of the committee, you know, the varying views of the members and kind of, you know, the overall consensus recommendation.
Great point.
Yeah, for what, excuse me, for what, that's how I saw the report coming from the committee that would help the board member make that decision. So the committee, you know, the, the facilitator would, you know, facilitate the meetings and then capture supposedly what the discussion has been and what the different viewpoints are. And the report will contain that, which will help us make that decision when, when the time comes. So it'll have the, the, you know, opinions and, and recommendations from one or multiple members of that committee.
I would agree that I think the narrative and the reporting of what's learned is going to be the most important. Being in, if, if through facilitation and communication, the committee reached a consensus, that would probably be very important information for the board. But if ultimately it were, you know, split six to six to two, then probably the specifics of that split is not going to be what's helpful. For the board, it's going to be the information and the collaboration and the the reporting back on what was learned, as opposed to very narrow. If, you know, if it's a very narrow vote on something very specific, it's not going to be as valuable in any, any event.
So I also want to take some time, you know, I'm so appreciative of all the work that the Just Schools Initiative has done and so much time and thought has been put into their various communications with the board. And recently, they've given us some recommendations as to what might be included in this charge. And so I just wanted to go through some of those and make sure that we were considering those thoroughly as we vote on the charge. Should I just get started? So I think we already, Andrew already addressed the survey of stakeholders issue. And then there's a, there's a call to gather data. And I think we sort of say that in the charge, but we could be more explicit with the language there. I'm trying to, I'm going back and forth between two documents. So if anyone wants to help out.
I think we could put in, well, how about, in order to conduct this analysis, it will comma, using, you know, data as available.
Yeah, and it could even be something as, it could be something that we do after the December, you know. I mean, I think some of the data will help guide the conversation needed to make a recommendation in December, but further data could be gathered after.
Yeah.
There's also a, there's also a line item, a bullet point underneath in the proposed charge. The first bullet point and then the sub, the last sub-bullet point is how the S R O position and district's safety.
Emma, just really quickly on that last part with regard to data, I interpreted it as not, not just creating a data set from existing data, but beginning to collect data on some of these actions and some of these issues that we're collecting.
Yeah, I did too. So it's like, we recommend that the charge include the exploration and reporting of data or lack of data. And then there's a list of things, so S R O arrests, referrals to the Community Justice Center and other interventions, complaints against the S R O, broader exclusionary disciplinary practices broken down. So, you know, I think, I think it's sort of twofold. Do we have the, is there any data that we have that's district data or from the police department or from the city? And, and take a look at that and then explore the possibility of how do we collect that data in the future?
Some of that data is not public, right? I mean, if children are involved in the criminal justice system, it's not a public data source.
Our end size is also too small.
Right, that's another issue.
Yes, we're gonna have legal limitations on what we can, can look at.
That can be helpful for informing conversation about this though as well. I know from the work that our office does, whenever we deal with third-party data, it's really, really restrictive, even more so than HIPAA, P H I and P P I data.
So there's a list of questions that I just want to make sure that they were answered. It seems like the, most of them were. What will the process be for selecting committee members? And we talked about putting out a call, a public call and people would be sending in a letter of interest to apply to be on the committee?
Yeah, I think that's the best way to do it. I think we can, you know, hopefully put some info on our, our website and maybe have Libby send out an announcement and have the principal send out an announcement to asking for, you know, interesting parents and community members to submit a letter. And, you know, it can go to, it can go to, give me, probably having it go to me is the cleanest. Just give me them, you know, one email and then I can forward, forward them along to the board as I get them.
Who is responsible for choosing the designated representatives from the school district, city council, students, et cetera?
The board.
So typically, when administrators are on a committee, they're chosen by the superintendent?
Yeah.
Are we gonna stick to that?
I think we stick to that, but I think, you know, Libby, I think would, would forward us the names of those she, you know, that are interested and that she would recommend. And I think we'd have the final say. I'm, I'm guessing we'd be on the same page about that and, but, does that make sense?
No, that makes sense to me. And I mean, I, I mean, it, it seems to me in terms of the city council, they can kind of decide. I mean, if multiple members of the city council want to express an interest to the board, then I guess the board can decide if the city council wants to send a delegate.
Yeah.
Then they can send a delegate.
I did, I will say too, I do think there is, with regard to some of the conflict of interest issues, I do see real value to a city council member being on this because of their ability to coordinate with the rest of the city and make requests to the city that we frankly might not get the same response on. I found that with the M S, M S Building Committee, having a couple of city council members was very, very helpful. And then the police representative will also have, provide, be able to provide very quick insights into issues that a lot of us don't know, that some people might know a lot, a lot about, but a lot of us don't know. So I do think there's value to those stakeholders being involved in this process.
What do you think about the balance of stakeholders, the, the number of people for various stakeholders? I mean, that's you in general, all of the board members, not just Andrew.
The, the way I do the math is that there's three community members, two students and three board members. So that's eight out of fourteen who are really people that represent the community overall. And then more, six slots reserved for more specific stakeholders within the, the school and the city. It seemed like a good, like a good balance to me.
I agree that I think board members represent the community. I wonder if that will be the perception of the public or if they will be seen as school officials. You know, it's a fine line, you know, what hat you're wearing.
I mean, we do have three separate community members. I mean, we are the community's representatives for the district. I mean, we're chosen by the community, not the, not the administration and/or accountables of the community.
I, I personally, I personally think it's, it's pretty balanced. And in addition to the eight that you mentioned, Bridget, there's also the city council member who also is held directly accountable to the public and is meant to represent the public and city, city matters. One, one thing I, I will, I will say is with this tight timeline, getting all these schedules to align is going to be very, very difficult.
Yeah, fourteen-member committee is, that's big.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we need it to be that size to be representative, but it's, it's a big committee.
It's big and the first meeting will just be kind of setting the context. So you kind of lose the first meeting, just laying out the background, the directions, the structure.
I, I am indebted to you guys for pulling this together and thank you for doing all that work. It was really nice to see this and I think the makeup makes a lot of sense. For me, what I was really looking for, which I do see here, is that we're not starting from just the place of S R O or no. It's what, what the problems are that we're trying to solve and what our students and our staff and our families need. And then what are the resources we need to get there, not just one path. So I think it was really wise to set that timeline. And I understand the concern about getting the committee together that quickly, but I think we do have to try, because I would like to be able to make that, you know, start January off with, with some solid information specifically about the budgetary impact. And then to have that little bit more time to really talk about stepping back and addressing the problems. Because simply having or not having the S R O position doesn't undo a lot of those problems. And some of the examples that we've heard of what we need as a district for safety for our students are not going to go away. And we need to make sure that we actually do have those resources in place in some way so that our students and our staff and our community can stay safe. So I think considering the, the, the timeline and considering the charge, I think, I don't know that there's any other way that you folks could have gone to set this up and pull this together. And, and I do think it's going to be really hard to keep sort of steering back to the one that's due in December versus the larger conversation. That'll probably be the biggest challenge, but if you're successful at that, then I think it, I think it can work. Thank you.
I have one other question just that I'll direct to Jerry and Ryan. There, there was, we made an effort to try to be inclusive of the Roxbury School District. And so we might need help making sure to recruit a Roxbury member, community member.
Absolutely. Maybe a question, I'm pretty sure that the charge does in general cover the question. But for me, one of the important things that's kind of come to the surface through all these discussions is there really is a lot of fuzzy area between the district and the police department in terms of contract and salaries and budgets. And I would really hope that when the report comes out in either the December or March report, we have a lot of recommendation, but we do have- but we do have a bit of an answer on what would be the best way to structure an SRO or a similar position if that were to be the case. And so we don't end up in the same murky area that we are right now. So I'm pretty sure it would be covered in the general terms of the charge, but I just want to state that to make sure that it might not have been overlooked.
Yeah, I think it definitely was considered, um, it could be put in more specifically. Maybe just a line about including formalizing the relationship between the district and the city PE, police department.
It does though say define aims and expectations of the role and conduct. But yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Ryan. You'd like to see something a little more formalized between have it be more established. Whatever that relationship is between the police department and the district, is that what you're saying?
I am, yes. If it were to continue, if, if the district were to continue to have an SRO position, I think it does make a lot of sense for us to be able as representatives of the community to tell the community this is the board's control over the position or it's not, how the administrators react to the, not how they react, but the oversight that the administrators have versus the police department, just so that we're clear on how the relationship is established.
Do, how about, how about this? My sense is that that charge is in there. And if there is a recommendation to continue with the SRO or to continue with some other formalized relationship, that would probably be a recommendation of the committee to the board, that it be formalized in an MOU. Do, should we leave that to what the decision of the committee is? If the committee comes back and say, says, you know, we feel that, you know, an SRO or a police liaison that's different from the SRO be established and we feel that that needs to be formalized along these four principles in an MOU rather than a charge for it to come up with an MOU, because it, it might decide that the best relationship is that you know, the district treats the, or the city PD treats the district like it would treat any other entity in the city.
I think it does make sense because it will depend on what the recommendation ends up being. I think it is probably covered in general in the charge as written, but I just want to raise that question.
Any other comments or questions or um, I think we probably need a motion to approve the charge as amended, because there's been some, some changes. Most of which I think I've at least jotted down in notes. You know, a motion to approve the charge as amended.
Can you read through the changes? So there's a record of what we're proving?
So the major ones I had, uh, spell out diversity, equity and inclusion. Include that the safety concerns of student, staff and families uh, under proposed charge in order to conduct this analysis at will using data as available. And by available, there is a discussion that that also means what the the district can can disclose in, in addition to what it also has. Um, so available in terms of a public sense. Uh, survey the stakeholders, this will include, but is not limited to the ones we have listed. Uh, plus families, students and community members. And that the the committee will meet the following timeline, uh, with the resource officer position. With the recommendation of the resource officer position being at the end of December rather than December two thousand twenty. Those are the changes I have. Did I, anything I missed?
Were we gonna add any language around data? I'm sorry, did I miss that?
Yeah, I did say that, that we will evaluate, um, conducting analysis at will. This is using data as is available.
So Ryan, would you accept a friendly amendment to your motion, the charge be approved as amended?
I would be happy to accept the amendments as presented by Chair Murphy.
Um, do you have a second?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Annika?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Bridget?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Mara?
Hi.
And I believe that's everyone. Um, and then I think the second piece is to approve the district hiring of facilitators to um, facilitate the committee.
Kim, do we also need to appoint board members to this committee as well, or is that?
This is due all next week when we have everyone. I think it's, it's likely to be the same three, but um, let's just, that's, that's a point the committee call is one when we get applicants next week.
That's good.
I would move that the board, um, hire facilitators to chair and facilitate, not to chair, but to facilitate this committee.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, really briefly, is Libby, does that come out of fund balance? Because we, we're not budgeted for that.
I first check what the board's budget is, because you have a budget as well. So we, and you don't use it all usually. I check what that is first and then, yes, the rest of it would come out of fund balance.
Okay. And we're talking about an amount of roughly forty eight hundred dollars.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Uh, Jill?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Annika?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Bridget?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Mara?
Hi.
Great, uh, so we are now on to board training. And only half an hour behind schedule, so. So Mara, thanks for the reading and I will, I will turn it over to you in the interest of, of uh, getting going.
Awesome. So I have a proposal for you board folk. Um, and I don't know if it's possible, given that this is meant to take place in the public portion of the meeting. But in order to allow us to ever go to sleep on time, I was going to um, make ask that you watch the video portion maybe separately so that we don't have to spend those extra twenty to twenty-five minutes. Um, I, I don't know how to make that available to the public except to offer them a link. But if that's okay and we're allowed to do that, then I will gladly cut those twenty to twenty-five minutes off. Allowed? Yes. Who's everyone's favorite board member right now? Mara. So, um, what I want to do is we're gonna discuss, um, the work that Tima Okun did on, um, trying to describe white supremacy culture in organizations. Now, one of the things that the video was gonna do was it was gonna kind of break down, what is systemic racism? What is white supremacy culture? Sometimes when we use these words, people freak out a little bit, right? Like they sound like big, heavy, scary words. And they contain words like racism and white supremacy in them, which automatically make people think like Ku Klux Klan, right? Levels of, that's what we're talking about. But that's not actually what we're talking about when we talk about systemic racism or white supremacy culture. And mind you, the same way that we're talking about systemic racism, we could be talking about systemic um, systemic sexism, systemic heterosexism, systemic cissexism, sys- systemic, you know, preference for the middle class, right? So um, it, we're talking about race because I want to specifically center race as a discussion, because it's really important that we do that. But I want us to understand that all of these isms operate in similar fashions, even when they're separated from one another. And a lot of times they're actually just enmeshed with one another. So I don't want people to think like, okay, well, we're only talking about racism and we're not talking about all the other things that are discriminatory. We're talking about racism because it's a really central, critical um, discussion to have and because we can kind of copy out some of the strategies and understandings from starting to get a capture on what we're talking about when we talk about systems. So I'll just start with the systems piece. When we say stuff like systemic racism or people say something like, oh, the biases are baked into the system, what do we mean by system?
I'm guessing that's not rhetorical.
No, it's not.
Because you want some answers there. I'd say it's everything that's around us, every process, a place that's, that we have cohabitated.
Absolutely. That, that's really actually a really awesome description, Libby. Thank you. So, so the systems, when we talk about it, sometimes you'll hear people say things like, that's a cultural construct, right? That's not real. It's a cultural construct. We as human beings created the world in which we live. It shifts all the time. But we create the reality in which we live. So we decided what the rules were gonna be as we moved into animal husbandry, right? We decided what the rules were gonna be as we moved into agricultural sustainability, right? Humans over time have decided how they were gonna be with one another and how they were gonna operate together. Who had the right to do what thing in what place? And sometimes those systems are really formalized, like we discuss the rules and we agree to them. And sometimes the systems are actually more, more along the lines of what you think of as culture, right? The unspoken norms that we teach to one another, even when they aren't officially rules on how we're supposed to act. If you ever want to test what we mean by cultural norms, if you are a person who grew up in, um, say, a metropolitan area of the United States that had elevators, but that also catered predominantly to white people. You can experience physically what our norms are like if you get too close to other people on the elevator. So some pieces, pieces of culture are like, no one ever comes to anyone and says, hey, in our culture, growing up in Iowa, you are allowed to stand this far from other people in the elevator or you will get in trouble. No one ever does that, right? But we learn through observation, we learn through listening, we learn through paying attention to consequences, what the rules of how things are gonna be are. And so we learn things like lots of folks who come, who come from wa- like white culture and especially who come from like a middle-class white culture, like, and in the United States especially, like a lot of personal space between them. We have like a specified actual amount of personal space. Um, it's actually kind of interesting that we will mentally move, we will move ourselves physically away from people. Now, this is pre-COVID. Before the, um, the circle around you needed to be six feet in any direction. But you can actually notice what happens if you watch in elevators or on park benches. If people get too close to one another, when the folks don't know each other. And you can also watch what the differences are. If people might, i- i- if people are maybe coming from different cultural realities. So that's what I mean. When we say culture, we, we mean, what are the ways that we live amongst one another? The things we accept as normal, the things we accept as good and bad, even if we don't talk about them out loud. And then the systems part of it gets even more formalized when we talk about what laws are we gonna agree to? What are the paperwork things gonna look like? What is the physical environment gonna look like? Those are the systems. So all this to say, that is what the video more or less would have said to you so that we could understand just a baseline about what we're talking about with systems. That said, the whole concept that Tima Oto- Okun gets at in her work around white supremacy culture is that there are elements of culture in the United States and around the world that are shaped by the culture that has dominant power. And when we're talking in racial terms, that means white people. And that is coming from a history of, you know, colonialism around the world. It's not an inherent way, obviously, that humans had to be. If, if, you know, dominance and power had worked out differently, we would have different isms that we're addressing. But the United States comes as a result specifically of European domination of this space, this land, the people on it, all of the things, the cultures, the understandings, the objects, all of the things that were here were overtaken, sometimes eliminated, sometimes erased, and those things were replaced with white ways of doing things. And those things are often unexamined. So that is why I assigned this article. Because the first time I read the list of Tima Okun's white supremacy culture in organizations, I said, no, that's just how you're supposed to run things. Which is exactly the point of white supremacy culture. And that is to say, there is one right way of doing things and this is the right way to do them. And other ways to do them are inferior or less good or less effective in some way. So what I would love for you first to give me is just to the extent that you've got, um, that you have some courageousness, talk about in, let's say, five words or less, emotions. So that's feeling words, right? Um, that you felt, or ways your body felt as you were reading the assignment. So we're focusing on emotions and the way our body felt, not things that you were thinking about, not things you were pondering. No reflections, just things you felt. Anyone board folks willing to offer some things that you were feeling as you read?
I can start. Do you want me to start? The brave superintendent. I can, I felt disappointed because it doesn't have the answers in there for me.
Disappointment? What are some other feelings people had?
Anger. Sadness.
I just, I thought of examples. Throughout my life and like every, I was like, oh yeah, that's, that, I, I see that manifest itself. I see this concept manifest itself in the workplace, like perfectionist in certain workplaces.
Felt some recognition?
Yeah.
I, I definitely felt recognition too. I also felt a sense of of change and generational change as much as, as diversity.
Yeah, a sense of change is good. We're really gonna focus hard on the emotions part here. And let me tell you exactly why we're doing that. Because good pedagogy explains to you how your brain is working so that you can learn it better in the future. We are working on the emotions part because one critical part of white supremacy culture of white culture in general is not discussing feelings, not couching things in terms of feelings and often not even being able to identify one's own feelings. So that's, we are literally undoing white supremacy as we do. Undoing white supremacy as we do this exercise, right? The second, focusing on, oh. A lot of the culture that I grew up with tells me to think about this first, but that it's gonna be a little bit weird. If I just tell all these people what my feelings are. If you're getting the sense that something I'm asking you feels a little bit weird or a little bit awkward. That is probably an indicator that that's a dominant culture piece at work that we're gonna do some work to get through. So I really appreciate this. Did anyone notice any body sensations, things you felt in your body? As we were doing this, the as you were doing this reading?
I think if I'd read it for something like this for the first time. I may have been a little, I may have bristled out a little more, but I've I've been through a lot of diversity trainees, a lot of these concepts. I've I've internalized.
And Jerry, were you gonna say anything?
I was gonna say um, like anxiety.
Yeah, absolutely. A lot of us, when we encounter the um, things like this for the first time, or even for. You know, several times out, there's a tension that rises and that tension can even be like in your body. You can be noticing like what, when I read this for the first time and someone asked me these questions. I realized that I had been compulsively taking the cap off of my pen. My body had been compulsively managing its stress. And I actually had developed a little bit of like a cut. Because I had been so like my body was managing the stress without my conscious input. And that means that there was a lot for it to be processing. Stuff that I didn't even realize was going to cause me stress to read it. So if at times you felt stressed, angry, anxious, sad, confused. Maybe even hopeful if you noticed like, oh, I can see some places where this changed. A lot of those things create tension. And I just want to also mention that as we're diving into this because some of that tension. Is also a defense mechanism that keeps us from talking about this. That makes it so physically, emotionally, and mentally uncomfortable to even read about. That we put it down. That is actually part of the function of that sort of. Uh, one of the things that you saw in there was like defensiveness or right to comfort. Those things are actually part of the culture that served to protect the culture from changing. So so just something for us to notice that if you felt anything along the lines of. Like uh, this really makes me uncomfortable. I don't really enjoy reading this. That that is actually some of how the system keeps perpetuating. I say that, board members, administrators, and assorted community wonderful people. Because those are the things that will keep us from doing the change that we need to do. It will keep us from having the conversations we need to have. It will keep us from having the conversations at the depth we need to have them. It will keep us from raising a point when we have a concern. It will keep us from speaking up at the Thanksgiving table or in the grocery store. Or at grandma's house for a birthday, wherever you are that you're with other people. And you notice things come up that like seem like, ugh. That doesn't feel right, but I don't feel like I'm supposed to talk about it, or I feel like it'd be really awkward. Helpful for you to notice that that's also part of the culture working. So that's part of our job to push through. I say that because this SRO discussion, if you haven't noticed, is gonna be replete with that stuff. And this is going to be something that we dive into for months. So just think about the fact that your body and your mind will sometimes be resistant to change pieces. And it is your job to push through the discomfort and keep doing the work anyway. Alright, so I also have another question that's pretty basic, and that is. What surprised you or interested you, or what's something you came across in there and you're like? Specifically that noise, no other curious noises. And for this one, if possible, I'd love to hear for at least one thing from everyone who read the article.
It's um, my response was it felt very American. It's very reflective of our current conflict and transition we're in right now. A lot of it has been the bill of goods we've been sold that makes you a good worker or uh, whatever. And that that's what we've been indoctrinated into.
So I had a uh, somewhat similar reaction um. Mainly because I came here um, when I was an adult. So getting into this culture um, from a completely different culture, to me, this is how things are. And so to be able to integrate, I have to pick up on these things and and rule with it. So reading the article is like, oh, this is. You know, this is what I've been told or, you know, I've seen it um, and that's not right. Or, you know, that that that's the kind of reaction I had.
For me, one of the the interesting things was the connectivity of the different concepts, like perfectionism and defensiveness. Like, you know, we should be able to have honest con- honest conversations about what's working well. And what's not working well and be open to examining those issues. But you know, these concepts of this perfectionism striving for like this perfect way of being and not. And and putting on like this front paired with like the defensiveness of when you identify something that's imperfect. How like, that's just an example of how these concepts come together. And many of these concepts to me represented. Obviously, they're toxic elements of our culture, but they, they're they're huge barriers to progress in so many facets of our lives. And I I, like I said, I just saw so many examples as I'm reading through this, I like see so many examples in the workplace and. So many examples in everyday life. Um, but lots of lots of good examples of people. Um, I I could think of at the same time of people trying to move beyond these these um. Ways of thinking, these structures, so.
Yeah, no, I think it it captured. Um, you know, the culture we have within the workplace is really rewards self-promotion. And I think has a bit of a a zero-sum game approach to. Um, kind of power and and influence. And I think it captured a lot of the. You know, the unspoken things that we kind of think of as virtues that that uh. Are really impediments.
Ooh, I love that word, think of as virtues. And I also don't wanna imply that these things are inherently bad. What they are are things that we don't acknowledge all the time. But that often we do think of as a good worker is one who. Does a ton of work all the time, works overtime. Put produces, 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 right? Good virtues. Ooh, I like that one. What else?
I have the huh, reaction on the piece about the worship of the written word. Cause that's pretty much what I do. Right, all the time. Anyway, so for that reason, you know, it made me pause and stop and think about that. And then I also was thinking about the conversation we had in policy committee recently about how dense. Some of these policies that are supposed to be promoting equity, how they're written in such an incredibly dense and legalistic way. So. Anyway.
I was struck by just how deeply entrenched and how many anecdotes and how relatable they were. And it just started to feel overwhelming really quickly. Um, cause I tend to be like a solution-oriented person and I like to problem solve. And so when I start, you know, the further and further I got into it, I'm like, huh, this is so much. And I I tend to try to like pick out little things and um, and try to implement those things and and work on, you know, one or two goals at a time. But it but it definitely was a lot.
So I guess for me, having grown up in a very German, small-town culture. Um, I always thought of it as that culture and not American culture. So that would be, sorry dogs, that would be sort of an aha moment, like, oh, it's not my. Little town culture, it's actually the whole country. And and the reason I say that is because I have worked my whole career with extremely diverse teams. I'm married into an Indian family, so I. You know, I've I've kind of embraced all these different cultures and I love learning about different cultures. But I always thought of my original foundational culture as that small-town German rather than American. So that was kind of aha moment, like, oh, okay, this is just American.
Anyone else?
Laura, I can share an apology with you. Actually wish I could.
Read my assignment, Ryan.
I unfortunately did not. To be honest, I would have rather spent my time doing this challenging work than. What's been on my plate for the last week, but yeah, I apologize. I'm not gonna be able to be a great part of the conversation this evening.
That's totally okay, because sometimes there are limitations on what you're capable of, and thank you. So I wanna just respond to a couple of the things that came up. And then we are, and I know that this is gonna sound kind of simultaneously relieving and frustrating. Then we're gonna be done for tonight. We're not actually going to do a lot with this. Because I want you to spend some time really noticing, so I'm gonna give homework, if you will. So one thing that I wanted to mention is we heard like good worker. And that really comes out when we look at our like our our quantity over quality. Our sense of urgency, how fast can you get things done? Perfectionism, how close are you to perfect? And how much do you do you get it right all the time? A lot of these things are things that we see as being virtues, like Jim said, of good workers, good people. In the United States. Now, I say in the United States. There there are other places in the world where lots of these white culture pe- pieces are similarly. Part of the foundational like organizational culture of the area. But when we talk about the United States, it is a little bit different because the United States is not. And never has been. Only white people, right? The the land here did not start out pu- start out populated by white people. And the number of people living in the United States bringing different cultures and different ideas. Is staggering, right? When a lot of us grew up hearing that America is a melting pot. But something that is true is that America, sometimes the way Anika identified. Is a melting pot in that it kind of requires you to s- to melt down into the same thing that everything else is. When in fact, we could be a toss salad, right? We could be a composite thing that was made up of lots of different ways of doing things. But a lot of what we do, especially in um, business culture and in education. Is require people to be the same all the time and try to shape them. Into being this kind of good worker model or to value the the things that we value, like that sense of urgency, being on time. Um, all of those things that sometimes are even like, well, what would we even be? How could you even function if you didn't value being on time? So I just wanna play with that one, not only because good worker, but good student falls in that line too, right? Our idea of who a good student is sometimes also conforms to these expectations. And so that leads me to a next piece, which is um, Andrew raised the idea of barrier to progress. In some ways, these cultural values are intended to try to push things forward faster. But in only one direction, right? So that all the things that we build keep being based on and in line with all of these values that we already had. But it does mean that we lose out on all of the things that come from creativity, diversity of thinking. Diversity of experiences. So uh, interesting fact that I learned when I was a study abroad advisor was that. Articles that are published in peer-reviewed journals. Um, that have multinational authors on them rather than being from any one nation. The are actually cited at a much higher rate. And they often produce better scholarship overall that gets used by more people. Than places that were one team from one country. So a team of only Americans, only Japanese people, only South African people. Often doesn't produce the same level of. Work that groups that have people coming from lots of different experience levels do. There are lots of examples of that. It's not just in academic pa- paper writing, but it's a chance again for us to think. If our idea of what is good, if our idea of what is appropriate, if our idea, even of what is lawful. And to bring in Bridget's point, like we, law is a way that we function. In some ways, we use law to try to create equality. And then we, what we have to have there is kind of like a backup is an understanding that no one way that we do things. Is gonna result in the best possible outcome. Trying lots of different stuff, experimenting, breaking our own rules sometimes. Is much more likely to result in not only a culture where everybody can feel a little bit more comfortable and a little bit more like they can be themselves. Instead of having to change to be something else. But also means we get the benefits of people's authentic experiences and authentic perspectives. So that's also a thing that I think a lot about in the classroom and with learners. It's a lesson that we've had a really, really long, hard time grappling with. When we think about things like access and ability. When it comes to thinking about what is learning, what is school? Does an assistantship somewhere count? Does the tech center count? Because the answer once upon a time would have been no, right? So as we expand our idea of what it means to be learning and what it means to be a good learner. And what it means to be a good worker and a good contributor to our community. It's gonna mean that we push on some of these pieces that we read here in this article. Um, and a last, and another thing that I wanted to address real fast, that worship of the written word. Gets at another thing that I wanna make sure we go away from this particular talk with, and that is. Just because something can be limiting or can be a barrier or can be. Operating in a way that is holding people back or doing damage of some kind. Doesn't mean that it doesn't also still have some functions that we may need. So worship of the written word. When we're talking about white supremacy culture, sometimes what we're saying is. Well, if I can just write this document in a way that you can't understand it, I can always get my way. Or if I can just say that we never wrote it down and you didn't know that that was the rule. I get to do the thing I wanted to because I made up the rule about writing it down and the law says we had to write it down, right? But on the other side of that is stuff like, if you never write anything down, it becomes really easy to take advantage of people. And say, no, we never said that. We never agreed on that. So I want us to understand that with these things, there's often a balance that can be achieved. We're not saying throw away all sense of time. We're not saying throw away your sense of what comfort is. Or throw away the written word. We're saying notice the patterns. And notice the places where we hold them so rigidly that it could be blocking people out. That it could be blocking people out. But then also take the opportunity to notice what would happen if we let go of this completely? Who might be locked out then? So that's just a piece to keep thinking about in, in multi directions. Um. And I think, like I said, I'm going to send you the video, but what I'd really love for you to do, sort of going away from here. This won't be the only time you ever have this discussion. Start trying to notice and maybe even take a few notes of places in your everyday life where you see this crop up. When we're in board meetings, I, I have mentioned on more than one occasion that I'm like. Robert's rules of order is white supremacy culture. Cause it is, it is a culture's way of saying, this is how we have to do literally everything. That sometimes locks out the ability to do dialogue or the ability to be more flexible. So look for ways that things like this might trigger in your mind, jot them down. And ruminate, and that is literally your homework, is to just notice. Things that are happening in your work environment, in your board environment, notice things that are coming out of kids' mouths. Right? Because we start teaching this stuff to one another really early. So that's it. All right, I'm done. Let's, let's do the next thing.
Thank you, Mara.
Thank you, Mara.
Yeah, that was excellent. And, um. All your trainings have been excellent. Um, we're super, super happy you're willing to do them and, um. Super glad you're, you're on the board and, um. Able to guide us through these things, cause they're, they're tough and needed conversations, um. So next item, and I have misplaced my agenda, um. I believe is the.
Policy monitoring, I think.
Policy monitoring, um. Here's my agenda, um. Fourth reading of the transgender and gender not performing students policy, um. Any questions or additions, uh, or edits, otherwise, um.
We didn't, we didn't get the new version until earlier today, correct?
The, it's important to note that the new version would have had one word difference. Do we wanna identify where that one word difference would be so that people could glance at it? It's in the, it's toward the bottom where we talk about. Um, former or current students having the capacity to change records. And we just took out current because the rest of the document refers to how we're dealing with current students. And that paragraph specifically refers to. If you're a former student and therefore you interact with the school differently than you would if you were a pupil. What does it look like for you? Does that sound like a good sum up? I remember it, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, that was the only difference.
And maybe just to re-clarify, the policy that's in front of us right now was the same policy that we read two meetings ago. There is no changes actually made. They had been discussed and somehow got included in the draft that came out on Friday, but. The one that's in front of us right now was the same policy that we read back in September.
Which should be. Explain why we left the language the same. My brain is not ready to explain our logic there, but, um.
I can. I can, yeah, so. So when the language was here before, there were concerns, there's a question raised about why the piece about former students didn't include current students. And the policy committee discussed it and. As Mara said, the rest of the policy is about how the, um. District interacts with its current students. And there really isn't a cons. And, and actually a, a big part of the challenge of how we interact with our current students can be. That we have students who identify differently from their legal name for a period of time. And so that's kind of, so that's like the, a big focus of how, um, we wanna have guidance for the district. And how the district interacts with current students. This piece about former students and the focus on a legal name change is kind of, it's just a different piece. That's. Because former students. Might never, you know, they might otherwise not have any basis for the district to be able to change their records. Unless we put this in there, because normally there's not much interaction between former students and the district where. Things we, so we, so it's a specific protection for former students to make sure that their records can be updated. It's really a different issue. I think we're just trying to keep the two things separate. The guide, the guidance for current students is a separate thing from former students.
Good, any, uh, questions or can we consider it read?
So is this ready for adoption next, uh, board meeting?
I, I think it may be.
Maybe.
Yeah, it's been a long, long journey, but.
I think, I think that means it can go on my consent agenda at the next meeting. Okay. Thank you, Bridget, cause you know, we probably asked you that anyway. Well, we'd ask Ryan, and Ryan's.
This has been a year plus long effort, hasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you to the.
Thank you, policy committee, for, it's.
Yeah.
Arrived in a great place.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and. Well crafted, well thought through, um. So finally, policy monitoring of student attendance and student freedom of expression in school-sponsored media. Um, do you have any questions or discussions about that? Otherwise we can. Um, have a motion to approve the monitoring reports.
I move to approve the policy monitoring reports.
No, a second?
Second.
Um. Any discussion? No, uh, Jill?
I.
Andrew?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Annika?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Mara?
Hi.
And Bridget?
Hi.
So approved, um. Next is motion to adjourn. Bridget, do you want the honors?
Sure, I'll move, Bridget.
Uh. Uh, Jill?
I.
Andrew?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Annika?
Hi.
Noah?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Mara?
You're welcome, and I.
Uh, and Bridget?
Hi.
Thank you all, and again, um. Huge thanks to Bridget for all her, her fantastic work over the. The many, many years, um, we, we will miss you, um.
Definitely.
But you have certainly put in your time and I'm sure it will be nice to have your Wednesday nights back, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you again.